I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. Remember to turn off your cellphones. Parking validation machines for the garage under City Hall are located at the rear of the chambers. Following roll call, during the summary of the hearing procedures, we will review how the public may provide comment during today's session. And at this time, if you're able, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now move on to roll call. Myself here. Vice Commissioner Bigford.
Here.
Commissioner Barosio.
Here.
Commissioner Bundal.
Here.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner Oliverio. Commissioner Torrios.
Here.
Commissioner Young. Moving on to the summary of hearing procedures. If you want to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located in the table near the audiovisual technician and deposit the completed card in the basket. There are also speaker cards in the back of the chambers and at the side entrance. The procedure for this meeting is as follows. After staff's presentation, applicants and/or appellants may make up to a five-minute presentation. During the public comment period, the Chair will call out names on the submitted speaker cards in the order received for the members of the public who attend in person. As your name is called, line up in front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. Generally, each speaker will be given up to two minutes for public testimony, and speakers using a translator will have up to four minutes. At the discretion of the Chair, the time allotted to each speaker may be changed depending on the minutes. The commission cannot take any formal action without the item being properly noticed and placed on an agenda. In response to public comment, the Planning Commission is limited to the following options: responding to statements made or questions posed by members of the public, requesting staff to report back on a matter at a subsequent meeting, or directing staff to place the agenda on a future, item on a future agenda. So staff, it looks like we have one speaker here for a public comment on an item not on tonight's agenda. Is that correct?
Yes.
It looks like Diego Jimenez, if you would like to come down and speak.
Back on June 24, I called the police of San Jose Police Department after a violent attack from David Schulhof. This man is the CEO of White Older Bell. I came home, he came out of my own blankets, naked, attacking me with a big taser, and I had to run outside to call 911. This man used to be my then-girlfriend's ex-boyfriend and has assaulted me in the past, verbally been complaining to me for the past month and a half that I've been living with her for seven weeks. And the third time that we met, he attacked me with a taser. And the police just did not do any report on this. And I've been working for so long and they keep ignoring me. The district attorney, city district attorney, I've been emailing the San Jose Police Department, everyone's been ignoring me on this case. I'm not sure if there's a right location to bring this up, but it's been so long. This happened on June 24, two years ago. And not, the police department has been refusing to talk to me about this. I had all the police officers come up to me and telling me, this is a misunderstanding. And no, this was not a misunderstanding, believe me. This man has seen me before. This wealthy CEO, I don't know, some Menlo Park AI company, attacked me, and my then-girlfriend was telling him to stop, and he just did not. I told him I was gonna call the police, and he still continued and chased me naked across the apartment. I had to run outside to call the police department. The, the vic, the police department told me that if I have no video of this naked man, old man chasing me, they were not gonna do anything about this. So I wanna know when I'm gonna get my belongings. My belongings, after seven weeks, I had some belongings there, I've never got it, I had some furniture.
Thank you, sir. That, that is your time. City Attorney, if you have anything that you'd like to say to addresses, grievance.
Thank you for your comment. Unfortunately, the Planning Commission is limited to only land use items. I understand that it sounds like you've tried to exhaust various law enforcement avenues to make this report. We'll just say not as legal advice, but that the district attorney's office has a victim unit that is responsible for, for, for following up with victim complaints. Unfortunately, this, this Planning Commission is not authorized to deal with any criminal complaints, such as the one that you have just described. Again, not as legal advice. If you are a resident of the City of San Jose, you can also try to contact your council member if you believe that they can help you.
I would certainly recommend trying to contact your council member again, or at least somebody else in their staff. Typically, the staff liaison can, is better at responding than the council member. Thank you. Moving on to deferrals and removals from the calendar. Any item scheduled for a hearing this evening for which a referral is being requested will be taken out of order to be heard on the first of this, to be heard first on the matter of deferral or removal. Staff will provide an update on the items for which deferral or removal is being requested. And if you want to change the referral dates recommended or speak to this question of deferring or removing any of these items, you should say so at this time. Staff, do we have any other items to defer for today?
No items.
Hearing done, we will continue to the consent calendar. There will be no separate discussion of individual consent calendar items, as they are considered to be routine and will be adopted by one motion. If a member of the commission requests debate, separate vote, or recusal on a particular item, that may be removed from the consent calendar by the Chair and considered separately. The public may comment on the entire consent calendar at any items removed from the consent calendar by the Chair. Staff will provide an update on the consent calendar. If you wish to speak on any of the items individually, please come to the podium at this time. On the consent calendar, we do have one item to review and approve, the action minutes from June 25, 2025. Commissioners, do we have any changes to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Moving on to voting. Vice Chair Bigford.
Yes.
Commissioner Barosio.
Yes.
Commissioner Bundal.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Casey.
Yes.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio is absent. Commissioner Torrios.
Yes.
Commissioner Young. Is absent, and myself is a yes. So that would be, eight yeses and two absences, and the motion carries. All right, we'd like to note that Commissioner Oliverio is here. Okay, next on to the public hearing. Public hearing items are considered by the Planning Commission in the order in which they appear on the agenda. However, please be advised that the commission may take items out of order to facilitate the agenda, such as to accommodate significant public testimony, or may defer discussion of items to later agendas or for public hearing, depending on time management. So moving on to item A, PDC 23-104, T 23-016, PD 23-016, and ER 23-176. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do. All right, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jason Lee, Planning Project Manager for this application, which is for the demolition and rebuild of the San Jose Buddhist Church Betzwin Education Building, which is currently located at 645 North Fifth Street. The project includes a planned development zoning to rezone the site from the PQP and RM zoning districts to a PQP-PD planned development zoning district, a vesting tentative map to combine six existing parcels, and a planned development permit to demolish all existing buildings on site, including the existing classroom building and daycare, four single-family houses and an accessory building, and remove six trees, two of which are ordinance size, for the construction of a new two-story church education building with alternating uses of a religious school, preschool, language school, and a privately operated community center, as well as an auxiliary building to be used as a storage and workshop. The project would include outdoor uses, namely the outdoor play area, which is located approximately 50 feet from a residentially zoned property. This project was analyzed for and found in conformance with the General Plan Municipal Code, Citywide Design Guidelines, City Council Policies, and CEQA. This project was previously heard at the Historic Landmarks Commission meeting on March 6, 2024, for early referral because the project impacts the integrity of an eligible historic district, namely the demolition of contributing structures to a eligible historic district. Mitigation measures flowing from that HLC meeting are included in the mitigated negative This project has requested exceptions to multiple citywide design standards and zoning requirements to maximize the amount of hardscape on the site, including the parking lot, in order to support community events. This includes zoning code exceptions to allow off-street vehicle parking spaces in both front setbacks. The location of these parking spaces still meet the citywide design standards, as well as citywide design standards to, exceptions to not meet tree canopy coverage and non-compacted soil requirements, to not provide pedestrian walkways across the two-row parking lot. And also additional exceptions are requested to relieve the project from providing a five-foot-wide landscape buffer across the southern property line. This is in order to allow emergency access clearance from fire, and also to provide 80% articulation for the street frontage of the auxiliary building, because it's a very small building. Finally, a tentative map waiver is also requested to allow a through lot with frontage on both Fourth and Fifth Streets in order to allow the main and auxiliary building to be on the same lot while still meeting general plan requirements, as follows. So for general plan conformance, this project site has a split general plan designation of public quasi-public and residential neighborhood. The general plan does include a policy, implementation policy IP 1-4, oh, -1.4, for properties with the split designations to allow flexibility of, for the actual use, location of uses on the property, so long as the proportionality of uses is maintained. So this is the detail of that. So in short, the language school use would only be allowed in the PQP designation and not the RN designation. So the classroom building footprint would only be allowed in a PQP portion. So the planned development zoning here is to make it so that the classroom building and the auxiliary building are both in the PQP portion of the PD zoning district, while the rest of the project is in the RM portion of the district. So the PD zoning allows uses pursuant to the existing zoning districts. So the PQP portion allows PQP uses, and the RM portion allows RM uses, so, and as amended. So in theory, the northern part of the parcel could be redeveloped with multifamily residential uses in the future, should the church so desire. For environmental, Bethel.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bethel, the Environmental Planner with the Planning Division, here to cover the environmental review for the project. The city prepared an initial study with a mitigated negative declaration in full compliance with CEQA. The ISM-D identified mitigation measures for potential impacts related to the construction air quality, nesting birds, historic structures, archaeological deposits, soil contamination, and construction noise and vibration. With the implementation of these mitigation measures and city standard permit conditions, the project would not result in any significant and unavoidable environmental impacts. The ISM-D was circulated for public review and comment from May 5 through May 28, 2025. Three formal letters were received during the public circulation period. The letters did not result in any substantial changes to the ISM-D and were addressed by staff in a formal response to comments document posted to the project webpage. Note, the project does involve the demolition of 639 North Fifth Street, which is a contributing structure to the eligible Japan Town National Register Historic District. This building, along with the others, were being demolished, was determined to be ineligible for individual listing in the California Register for Historic Resources or as a candidate city landmark. Available for any environmental review questions.
All right, thank you. So we're just gonna close out with the recommendation here. So as the application has been found consistent with the general plan, zoning code, design guidelines, and city policies, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council to adopt the ISM-D and approve the planned development zoning, vesting tentative map, and planned development permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And do we have any presentation by the applicant?
Save ourselves some time between. Evening. Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Should we get started? Great. So I'm Mike Charney, I'm with Spectrum Project Management Group. I'm the PM and Construction Manager for the project, joined by Reverend Sakamoto and Afshah Ali, who heads up our, our design team with ADIS Architects. So again, thank you for having us. The project inception was roughly 30 years ago, was a conversation. I think you guys can see the PowerPoint on your screen, these two gentlemen, 100 years old and 94, respectively. They had just gotten their licenses when that conversation happened. Come on, guys, it's a little bit of a joke, but, but both gentlemen, not to pull any heartstrings, but the gentleman on the right ray is 94, and he'd like to see this project completed before he makes his, takes his, no, makes his next stop in, in, in life's journey. So not unusual for a project like this that's funded by, purely by donations to take this many years. I just, the length of time really amplifies every milestone that we've reached, including tonight, and all the milestones moving forward, getting to the finish line. So again, thank you for, I mean, it's, it's your efforts that have, that have gotten us here, and, and we can't thank you enough for the support and continued, the advocacy and continued support. So just rich history with the, with the church, with Japan Town. We're coming up on 125 years. In two years, the church will be 125 years old. The sanctuary was built in 1937. It is the original sanctuary, and it is still used every day. So not to steal too much thunder here from, from Reverend Sakamoto, but, so I've, I've been involved in the project for roughly four and a half years. I wish every client was, was like this client, they're sensible. The building committee is sensible, smart, decisive, and, and engaged. And, you know, to, to use the word curated, we certainly have curated a, a collection of consultants who are best in class and have very, very deep San Jose experience and downtown San Jose experience. So we pay close attention to who we brought on board, and, you know, at the end of the day, we feel like we, we have a, a really well-thought-out and sensitive design, which Afshah will comment on here shortly. We are selecting our general contractor now, who will similarly, all four of our bidders have the same level of San Jose experience, also best in class. So just talking a little bit about the existing building, this is an elevation of the new building, the existing building, which I think you probably are all well familiar with. It started as a single-story building, built in 1955, and then in 1964, a second floor was precariously perched on top of it. It's truly an adaptive reuse. It was not built for the purpose of the Lotus Preschool, or the Dharma School, or the Japanese Language School, which by the way, was founded in 1907, and, and the library as well. There are several, and it's important to note that all of these functions are open to everyone. There isn't a night during the week that something's not going on, whether it be Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, dance lessons, all kinds of things. But it's really time to move on and take the next step into the future and to galvanize the legacy of the church, of Japan Town and the community as a whole. And, and it should be noted that San Jose Japan Town is one of the last three remaining in the country, the other two in Los Angeles and San Francisco. I'm sorry, yes, that's correct. So I'm gonna turn it over to Afshah.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah?
Yeah, just briefly, I wanna go through like the design intent. As you can see here, it's a very open design, very simple. As Mike mentioned, the existing building was adapted, and this building is being designed with the honoring churches program. Of course, it's gonna be code compliant, so we are providing that structural seismic safety to our occupants. It's all electric, so we have, we are honoring the sustainability aspect. We are also using mass timber, which is, you know, low-carbon, embodied material, and that's providing a biophilic, a really good well-being environment for the students and, and the staff and, and community. You can see the site, it's very open, welcoming to the community. The unplanned outdoor spaces are spaces you can imagine where a community, you know, can come together and just, you know, for their gathering, and a very happy atmosphere. Yeah, I think I'm gonna pass on to Reverend with that.
Good evening. As was mentioned, my name is Gerald Sakamoto, I'm the head minister, current head minister of San Jose Buddhist Church Betzwin. The temple was established in 1902, since its founding has served as a gathering place, a place where people could come and find friendship and community. At first, because of prejudice and lack of opportunities, the focus was to primarily serve the Japanese community. They worked hard, like other immigrants.
I think that concludes your five minutes, but you will have another five minutes after a public comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we will open it to public comment. Each speaker will have two minutes. It looks like we have a Mr. Onishi as the only card I have at the moment.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. Actually, what I'm gonna do is I would like to read a letter from one of our main people in San Jose Japan Town that's supporting us. Says, "Dear Planning Commissioners, we are excited at the opportunity to comment on a project that will make a significant and positive impact on a community, the San Jose Buddhist Church Betzwin's proposed Dharma Center. As one of the last three remaining Japan Towns in the United States, we often stand in the shadow of our sister Japan Town communities in Los Angeles and San Francisco, as we lack the infrastructure such as community centers, theaters, and parking to make it more attractive to visitors. Opportunities such as the recent KTVU Zip Trip segment a few weeks ago are a reminder that the San Jose Japan Town is unique and special. This project will continue the San Jose Japan Town, providing a special experience in San Jose. Japan Town Community Congress of San Jose is composed of nonprofit organizations, business owners, property owners, and members at large who advocate for the preservation of San Jose Japan Town. It is with enthusiasm that we applaud the San Jose Buddhist Church Betzwin to envision a new and fresh resource to San Jose Japan Town. It clears blight and consolidates properties to create a cohesive and land use for the neighborhood. As the new home for the Lotus Preschool, it will be safe environment built specifically for the future of children versus the current use in an existing building that was not built specifically for preschool use. The completion of the Dharma Center is a project we look forward to and encourage a favorable support of this project. Sincerely, Pam Yoshida and Ryan Kawamoto, co-presidents of the Japan Town Community Congress of San Jose." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other members of the public who would like to speak? All right, with that then, we'll turn it over to the commission. I have, my apologies, the applicant has another five minutes, if you would like.
I can speak a little less hurriedly, but again, thank you for this opportunity. The temple was established in 1902, since its founding it has served as a gathering place, a place where people could come and find friendship and community. At first, because of prejudice and lack of opportunities, that focus was to serve the Japanese community. They worked hard, like other immigrants, to build a home, a place for their families, a temple where, was a gathering place for families and comfort. In 1936, 1937, at the height of the Great Depression, they pooled their resources and built a main temple hall, a celebration of the foundational values and a gift for future generations. Within five years, this vibrant community was incarcerated and sent to internment camps in remote, desolate places in the interior of our country, far from their hopes and aspirations. Eventually, they were able to return to the temple served, and the temple served as a hostel while, as people began to rebuild their lives, to rekindle their hopes and dreams for their families. Perhaps it's because of this history that there is a profound understanding of the importance of inclusion. Our vision statement developed over 10 years states, "We are striving to create an inclusive environment of unconditional acceptance, respect, and gratitude, where we honor the past, appreciate the present, build for the future, and learn to engage a life of compassion, action." It is our commitment to this Dharma Center that will be a gathering place where all are valued and welcomed. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, are there any other? With that, we'll turn it over to the commission. I have Commissioner Cantrell, followed by Commissioners Bundal and Casey.
Actually, I just wanna say, it's just, it's amazing to see something so beautiful rise from the ashes of something so tragic. It would definitely, it's my honor to actually, and I hope we all will agree with this today to, to support this effort and approve this project. So I'm gonna move to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Cantrell and a second by Commissioner Oliverio. Commissioner Bundal.
Wow, I mean, what an exciting project, such a beautiful project. I come from Evergreen, side of San Jose. Within a mile radius, we have four religious centers. What I practice is Punjabi Sikh. We also have a Christian church. We have an Evergreen Islamic Center, and newly coming Cambodian Buddhist temple, which is gonna be located on 2740 Ruby Avenue. Before my time, my fellow commissioners, I believe their project came to the commission, and they all voted on that. But that's the beauty- definitely, it's a very welcoming environment. You see people from all over the city, attending kids, older people, et cetera, and, and the space as well. I've seen the setup for it, and I think it's, it's well-designed in terms of having additional outdoor space during those festivals to accommodate even larger crowds within the community. So I'm definitely a very strong supporter as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Casey. Commissioner Torrios.
Thank you. I just want to echo the sentiments of my other commissioners here. I think this is an incredible project. The building itself, very beautifully designed, and I think having the onsite preschool, the community center, the plaza available for use during all of Japan Town's festivals will be an incredible asset for the Japan Town community over the next century. So just really want to commend the project applicant team for sticking with this project and continuing to push it forward over all of these years. So very honored to be able to support this project today. Thank you.
Commissioner Bigford.
I just have a question for the applicant about sustainability and about what specifically on, on the property, are there things like solar panels, or are you thinking about the, the building itself as having future sustainability?
So the building is very simple, as you can see, it's just a box. And as far as the sustainability aspect is concerned, we are making sure that it's code compliant, so whatever is required by the code is being provided. To enhance more, the, the way it's designed is we are using, all-electric is also part of like, we can say, San Jose. But in terms of efficiency, yes, solar panels will be provided. That's again, the code minimum that's required. We understand that owner is working with, with a certain budget, so we do want to provide an efficient design to them. I spoke about mass timber, which it could be a good new material for some of us, but that's a very low embodied carbon, so that material is kind of built out of like wood, which could generate really fast, which could grow really fast. And it's, it can also, appearance-wise, it's provide a very natural look when kept exposed. So we are looking at providing the actual structural system out of that, that helps us to keep open ceilings, tall ceilings. And overall, you know, like we see here, when we see wood around, it just gives us a, you know, a happy feeling. So for someone visiting or, you know, spending whole time in, in such a closed space, we are enhancing the space, providing that. So it has a sustainability aspect being used as a structural material, as well as, you know, a well-being aspect to it. In terms of other utilities and services, we are working closely with our mechanical engineers and working on like how we can provide a, a design which is, you know, less material and which uses less energy sort of. So dedicated units for individual rooms, so the buildings, the rooms that will be used just going to be provided with the conditioning.
Thank you very much. I, I would love to see, because I, I've been there a bunch of times since I was a kid as well, and, and I would love to see that the community knows that, that the building itself is investing in the future for, you know, another hundred years or so of, of ability.
So some sort of like, like a board, display board that could show what are, what are the elements being used here? Yeah, absolutely. Yep, thank you.
All right, seeing no other commissioners, I, myself would like to thank the applicant and everybody that's putting together the work behind this. I know San Jose is very, very proud of its Japan Town, and it's wonderful to see the folks that are putting it together, and I personally can't thank you enough. So we have a motion from Commissioner Cantrell, a second from Commissioner Oliverio, and we may now go to a vote. Commissioner Bigford?
Yes.
Commissioner Barosio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundal?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Cantrell?
Heartfelt, yes.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrios?
Yes.
Commissioner Young is absent, and myself, I'm a yes. The vote, the motion carries, nine-two, with one member absent. And that ends the public hearing. So we may move on now. Are there any refer, two referrals from the City Council, boards, commissions, or other agencies? Are there any referrals from the City Council?
No referrals.
Okay, on to good and welfare. Staff, is there a report from City Council?
City Council is in recess the month of July, so we have no reports. The next City Council meeting will be August twelfth.
And then is there anything to report on regarding this, any upcoming study sessions?
We do have a study session scheduled for August thirteenth for proposed changes to resolutions and staff report formatting.
Is that on the fourteenth or the thirteenth?
Thirteenth? Yes, thirteenth. Yes.
Thank you. Anything else for the public record?
No.
All right. Then that brings us to the end of tonight's session. We are adjourning at...
Chair, one question for staff. At, at the August thirteenth planning study session, could we get a five, ten-minute update on what the new state law and the elimination of CEQA for infill development under eighty-five feet, and what that'll mean, what that'll change? I think by then, you may have more familiarity than to, than, you know, the next meeting.
Yes, we, we can provide a verbal update. Staff is working on an informational memo likely maybe late August, but that will outline the impacts of the state bill on CEQA reform.
Yeah, you can do a dry run on the memo with us, son.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the end of tonight's agenda. Yes, Commissioner Bigford.
There was a note sent out today about a meeting in September, along with the City Council. Did anybody else see that?
Yes, so City Council, we, we are scheduling a study session September eighteenth, and we would like to have the Planning Commission attend as well, and it would be sort of a general plan land use, not one-on-one, it's actually more of a history of how we got to GP twenty forty, sort of what's going on with the general plan, an update on the four-year review, really a deep dive on land use issues.
All right, anything else from any of the commissioners? All right, hearing none, we, hearing none, we are adjourning at seven eleven PM, and thanks, everybody. Thank you.